It is 8:30. We call the School Board of St. Lucie County Special Public Hearing Meeting to order. Welcome to all of you in our audience and to in our viewing audience. We look forward to a good conversation this morning and some fact-sharing and some just time together to get to know one another in a higher fashion. First, though, I would like for us, please, to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and the Kids at Hope pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible and infinite and just as for all.
And our Kids at Hope pledge?
As an adult and a treasure hunter, I am committed to search for all the talent, skills, and intelligence that exist in all children and youth. I believe all children are capable of success, no exceptions.
May be seated.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to welcome everybody here this morning to Fort Pierce Central High School. And before we officially start, I want to just thank the school, Principal Todd Smith, for allowing us to intrude here this morning. I want to thank the ROTC. You saw the young men and young women out front that were directing folks and our security folks and all of our staff members that made this possible. Madam Chair, I'd like to make, before we begin the public hearing and get comments from the public, I would just like to make a couple of comments to the board and to the public as well, and then open and then turn it back over to you to open it up for the public comments. First off, last week, literally a week ago today, this is our first opportunity publicly to thank our community, but we are just coming off the heels of a very, very successful referendum. And I think what's important is that we had over 66 percent yes votes. And if you look at the screen, you'll see that this was a special election, which is the highest turnout ever in St. Lucie County for a special election at 30, almost 33 percent. And that surpassed the August primary of 1918, not 1918, 2018, and just as past August. And so we're very pleased and we want to just thank our public for their value of public education. We want to thank them for entrusting us with these dollars to do what we say we're going to do for teacher salaries, for school security, for mental health. And there will be, the board, we will be meeting here next month to discuss the Oversight Committee and the makeup of that. And so again, we just want to say thank you to our to our public for for supporting us. It's a it's a great day. The state of Florida is 46th in the nation in teacher salaries, and 20 school districts in over the last year went to their voters because we get inadequate funding from the state. And all 20 passed, and so many of the surrounding counties, Martin, Palm Beach, Miami-Dade, they passed them as well. That would have made it very difficult for us to be able to compete, to recruit and retain teachers. So we're very pleased with this and for those that whether they voted yes or no, the fact that they participated in this process. Today, we're coming here today to make, I'll be making a recommendation for the on the application. And before I do so, I want to make some comments. There's been a lot of information that's been out there in the public, and I just want to do a brief, kind of a summary of the school district, some of the things that we're doing in the district, talk a little bit about the charter process, and then make a recommendation at the end of the presentation. We're currently a B-rated district. We are 1 percent from an A. If we could count Palm Point, which doesn't count as a district school, even though it's a district-managed school, or we could count last year's graduation rate, which is a lagging indicator, we would be an A-rated school district. So we're right there at the cusp of that and very proud of the gains that we've made. On the screen, you'll see the chart that starts from 2004 to 2018, pretty much from 2004 up until 2016. The district meandered in the 40s and the 50s when we compare ourselves to the 67 counties. But over the last four years, we've really been able to make some remarkable gains there, really shooting up now from the bottom third to the top third to be ranked 22nd in the district and on the Treasure Coast, trailing only in Martin County in that category. We have no-failing schools. We're in the top 10 in graduation ranking. We'll talk about that in a moment. You can see 66 percent of our schools are As and Bs, and then you, we'll talk a little bit more about our career technical academies. This is a remarkable four-year trend, going from 75 percent to 92 percent from over the last four years. And we anticipate we're in graduation season right now. We will be doing the graduation ceremonies within the next few weeks and anticipate that number to be just a little bit higher when all is said and done. Just wanted again to share for the public as well what the individual schools have been able to accomplish. And these are the traditional high schools in the county, and to see that the double-digit gains for all of our schools, with the exception of LPA, which is right at 100 percent, to see the double-digit gains in graduation rate for all of our schools. But in particularly, I want to look at PSL High School, that's gone up 97 percent. Westwood up at 28 percent. Treasure Coast High School at 98 percent. Centennial at almost 98 percent. So tremendous gains in our community over the last few years at our school centers. When we take our comprehensive high schools and compare them with the surrounding counties, and I'm just talking about the comprehensive high schools, this is, there's 11 of those schools in, when we count Indian River and Martin County, we rank first in that at almost 97 percent graduation rate. Our three-year industry certification trend, you can see going from 900, almost 1,000, to 2390, you know, a significant gain there as well. So it's a district on the move and moving in the right direction. Within our career and technical education programs, you can see the programs that we currently offer as a district. A lot of folks are surprised when they actually see exactly what we're doing with the 62 academies and the 42 industry certifications. I'm only listing the schools that are in the in Port St. Lucie, in the city limits of Port St. Lucie, but these are some of the, these are the Career Academy, our programs that we offer to the schools. The ones that are highlighted in the bold will be coming onboard next year. The Building Trades and Construction Design, that'll be a shift from the Carpentry Academy at Port St. Lucie High School. But if you look down at PSL and you looked at, and over at Centennial, you'll see Outboard Marine Service Technology will be incorporated next year with the advent of, with the port coming in and some of those industries that are going to be coming in. We stay very closely aligned with that to be able to adjust and pivot very quickly to meet the needs of the community. I won't go through these and read these, but they're there for the screen to see that there's a tremendous amount of programs that we offer that are geographically, we're a school district and we serve the needs of all of our students throughout the district. So we try to make sure that students are able to, whatever school that they choose or whatever program they want to go into, that they'd have access to that. One of the things that was talked about through this process was the Economic Development Council and the Skills Gap Study. And I'm on the board of the Economic Development Council, attend all of their meetings, and I'm very, very in tuned with, was, work very closely, let's say, with, in this study itself. And this this particular slide really is taken exactly from the from the Skills Gap analysis results, and it talks about the recommendations in the in the center area. It talks about Indian River Industrial Training Center. I know that we'll know this week whether that, the funding has gone through for the for the school itself, for Dr. Massey and the school to begin construction on that center. We do shared curriculum, we do internships, we do apprenticeships, we do the externships, we're involved in the scholarships, we're involved in the boot camps, the mentoring, and marketing the careers. And in that economic development survey, the three areas that they focused in on was healthcare, manufacturing, and the trades, and I'll talk about that in just a moment. As a result of that, and as a result of the economic landscape of the district, these are some of the initiatives that we've taken on in the school center. And we've done a facility, I know that I see some folks here from the Treasure Coast Builders Association, we've done a facility sharing program over at Port St. Lucie High School for apprenticeships in the evening. In fact, that picture, I think Matty's here, Matty, you'll find yourself right there in the very middle of that of that shot as well, up there with the with the Career Day where the students went out, I believe it was to GL Homes. And we've got advisory boards, we've got speakers, you can see what we do, there are scholarships, the Career Days. In addition to that, we've expanded a lot of our clinical partnerships, including the new Cleveland Clinic, Martin Memorial, the name Cleveland Clinic is new, but Martin Memorial is not new. One of the things that we do were bus tours for our counselors, so that our counselors are in tuned with what's going on in the community, so that they can better work with the students and direct them, whether they go into career or whether they go into college. We've been involved in the Healthcare Roundtable, the Boot Camp. This year, it's going to be added for skilled trades as well. The State of the Jobs Conference, everyone here, I believe, has participated in that, and then the sponsored, the industry-sponsored scholarships and the internships. I mentioned the Construction Technology Program will be new this year, the Outboard Marine Technology at Centennial High School, and the, we'll be infusing welding and manufacturing, welding and manufacturing at Treasure Coast High School and up at Westwood High School, and some robotics at Westwood High School. I want to do a little brief, brief history here of the charter movement in the state of Florida, which began in 1996, when the Florida Legislature approved charters. At that time, I was in Tallahassee. I was in the position of what was called principal and residence. I was selected by then Commissioner of Education Frank Brogan, who worked directly for Governor Jeb Bush, and this was the beginning of the charter movement. And in the office that I was in, the physical space, the Office of Charter Schools was right in the same area. So I was very much in tune and aware of what was going on. The emphasis at that time, at the beginning, 20 some odd years ago, was really to have charter schools to be an alternative for kids that were really academically low-achieving and that were, just weren't making it in a regular public schools. And so we had a lot of what's called mom-and-pop programs, charters that would open to try to meet the needs. I know in St. Lucie County, there were a few of them, one particular up on Orange Avenue. And it was really a try to, a good faith effort to try to meet the needs of children that were suffering or struggling and not just making it in the public schools. And the law provided that any child that, it had to be located, you know, it was open to any student in the school district where the charter was located. Also, what was important about the beginning years of the charter movement, that it really targeted certain age groups or grades considered at risk for academic failure, and it limited the number of charters that students could, that could be offered in the district. That's kind of morphed now over the last 20 some odd years, where I don't believe there's a limit anymore on the number of charters in a community. Charters are eligible for capital outlay funds. The Legislature over the last couple of years has decreased powers of district school boards and made it more of a Department of Education function, and not just in this area, but in other areas with local municipalities. It's called home rule and taking some of those things away. And that's the state law, and that's the the political landscape, and that we have to to navigate that. When the, when the application comes in, based, whether it's Somerset application or any application for a school, for a charter school, staff has to review that, and staff reviews that very extensively. And here's the reason why. Number one, it's by statute we do, but more importantly than that is that we are really stewards of the taxpayer dollars. And just as mentioned a week ago, our public really showed a lot of faith and trust in the school district with entrusting us with the money from the from the referendum. And so we want to be good stewards of that. Thus, we have our outside advisory groups to make sure that every penny goes to where we say it's going to be. We have to look at the the applications that come in to make sure that they're financially viable, because millions of dollars can be at stake and can be lost from the taxpayers. Down in Palm Beach County, just to give an example, when I was superintendent down there, and then even after coming up here, several charters have had to have had to close based upon a couple of reasons. This slide here just shows since 1998, the charters that have not been successful, and usually the causes are based on financial, the pressure, financial mismanagement in some cases, and sometimes it's academic reasons. What's important is, is that there's not a separate pot of money that comes down from Tallahassee when charter schools serve a community. The dollars that come to the county and the dollars that come to the school district, the dollars follow the students. So if there's a charter school that's going to open up, it's not like there's an additional pot of money and says, okay, here's an extra allowance for for St. Lucie County, or here's an extra allowance for whatever county would do that. Those dollars are the dollars that come in through the FTE, through the students, and the dollars follow the students. So nationally, and this slide here really is from the Brookings Institute, talks about, there's like a sifting of the dollars that come to us that will go to the charters. So it's important when we're looking at these, that the charters are innovative and really not duplicative of what we're doing, or I feel like it's really a disservice to our taxpayers and to the system itself. That's a conversation and a debate for another day, but I want to make sure to the public that they're aware that there's not a separate pool of money for charters and that these, the dollars follow the students. And so we want to make sure that whatever's offered really could be unique. Port St. Lucie, and we have representatives here, and I know they'll speak in a few moments, and their strategic plan, Objective 3.2, talks about, they put it in their, in their strategic plan, that they want to enable sustainable trades, the technical workforce, through a career technical campus center serving secondary-level kids and while serving post-graduation opportunities. Within that, I know that the city had their retreat, and I, and I know that Assistant City Manager is here this morning, and he talked about when he presented on October 22nd to the council, that the driver for the for the for the city itself to come forward was really the Skills Gap Study in itself. And I know these have been conversations that have been going on for many years within the within the county itself. There's a citizen survey that went out as well, and I want to make sure that I'm clear on this, on the citizen survey, because I saw it and received one myself, that when the citizens are responding to a vocational technical career charter school, I think many of them are thinking about the pure trades, the construction academies, the welding, the plumbing, the carpentry, the HVAC, those kinds of things, when they say they see a need for that. And I believe 80 percent of the residents said that. Our position as a district is that, and I believe that Mr. Ludlam from the Treasure Coast Builders Association also approached and made some comments to the board after the committees met and made the presentation to the to the city council, that they wanted to make sure that this this school center itself would be a true career technical center and not really morph into something else, and it asked the council, even in the lease agreement, to make sure that there were some assurances there that the that the school would not lose the focus of the career tech charters, which I think is so important to this board, so that it's not duplicative of what we're doing, but offers an opportunity for students in those areas to be able to to enroll in the school center and to take those programs. In the application itself, it's similar to some of the programs that we have here in our county. The concept itself of small learning communities is something that we do, but I'm not saying that it's not worth a shot. I do want to read a comment here from our response, a memorandum to the school board regarding this, and this really cuts through everything, and this is really the bottom line. If Somerset does provide a true vocational tech school with strong emphasis on the construction, electrical, plumbing, HVAC, and welding trades as envisioned by the city and addressing employer needs for the county students, I'm sorry, and addressing employer needs as reflected in the EDC Skills Gap Analysis, then Somerset will be adding an educational option for the county students. However, if Somerset provides a general education school without guaranteeing specific voc tech career elective as described in the application, then Somerset is adding little to the offerings already available through the school district, through the school district schools. So when we look at the Skills Gap Study, which focused really on the manufacturing trades and healthcare, the Skills Gap Study in itself never recommended a career charter school in and of itself, but that's something that that came later on. However, what I'm asking for in making this recommendation is that the county, the city of Port St. Lucie, and the Somerset representatives will be true to the original mission of what the residents, I believe, want, what the community wants, and that's a career technical school that will focus in on the vocational trades as have been talking, I talked about. That doesn't mean that the landscape will not change, doesn't mean there will not be other programs that should be, that can be and should be offered. The area of healthcare is a tremendous growth. There's room, I think, for both parties in that area. We're just hoping that this is what the the intent is and that 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 really remains the true mission of the of that school in the vocational technical area and the and the trades, the construction trades. On the screen right here is, and I'm going to close right now, is our mission statement and a picture of the Statue of Liberty there. And in every one of our schools, you'll find, hopefully in the front office, a replica of the Statue of Liberty. And this is important to us. When we deal with charters in themselves, and I'm not talking about Somerset, I'm talking about the concept of charters in general, what's important to this school board and to myself and to our staffs is equity and to make sure that all of our kids have an equal chance to be successful. And equity is not equality. Equity is making sure that they have access to programs. And sometimes in our charter, in our charters, there are barriers that are placed to our students, whether it's based on transportation, and Somerset has a very good transportation plan, maybe one of the best, it is the best transportation plan of the charters here in in St. Lucie County. In the area of ESC, an exceptional student education, Somerset has demonstrated and has done a really good job with that in trying to work with the needs of our special-needs students. So it's important that that there's equity for our students and that students have access. If you move to St. Lucie County right now, if you came into the county today, you could be enrolled in one of our schools this this afternoon. You don't have to have a G grade point average. You don't have to have parent involvement. The mission of public schools is really to educate, take every child, and to make them successful. I look forward to working with Somerset staff. I know that I believe I read that they had a 2.0 GPA for admissions, and I don't want to, I don't want to get into the qualifications right now, but hopefully it'd have discussions afterwards, because that pretty much limits certain students. And I'm not sure that that's what the city leaders want. When we talk about having the school center that will prioritize city residents or students that live within the city and then look for other students as well that may have an interest in the programs that are offered, that this would truly be open to all children and that there would not be a GPA. There may need be a GPA that's needed for specific programs, particularly in the health arena, where you don't want to set children up for failure, but that it would be open access to the children to come in and not deny them. That ties into our Kids at Hope, that we believe all children are capable of success, no exceptions. So that's something we want to look at. Many of the kids, we talk about parent involvement as well, and we'd all love to have that parent involvement. The first and best teacher should be the parents, but that's not the case for many children in this country right now. And so the schools kind of take on that role, and it's just kind of evolved over the last few years and looking at the different needs of the children. So, having said that, staff has reviewed the the application that's presented, that was presented to us. Staff will recommend that the, that this application, this is an application that will be approved, that staff will recommend that it's approved with four conditions that are listed at the end. And if the board today takes the decision to to take that recommendation and to improve it, then the next steps would be as follows. We would have 30 days to provide Somerset with the proposed charter. We'll then have 40 days after that to negotiate the charter, go before, then it would come back before the school board for approval. I don't want to read this to everybody. If we can't agree, then DOE can provide mediation. If the Commissioner of Ed doesn't believe that it's, would help, then it could go immediately to an administrative law judge after that, and he would issue, or she would issue a final order, and then it could be appealed to the Fourth District Court of Appeals. It would be our hope that we would be able to work with, work with the academies, with Somerset officials, to review some of the concerns that we have and to to try to work things out so that this would be a win-win for the for the community. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. We will then now open the public hearing, but a few housekeeping, if I could, before we get started. First, when I call your name, and I will call them in the order that the cards were received, if you would come to the microphone directly to my right here and be sure you speak directly into the microphone in a large auditorium like this, we don't want a lot of the background noise happening, so please speak directly into the microphone, and I'll remind board members the same thing. Our acoustics are a little different in here than we're than we're used to, so please take recognition of that. Also, due to, we are on time certain to adjourn at 10 o'clock this morning. We have school groups that need to use the auditorium afterwards, so we will hold it to time certain adjournment at 10 o'clock. That being said, we are going to divide the remaining time into the number of folks that have turned in a card, and if any of you need a card, would like to speak, if you'd raise your hand now, we can get a, get one to you. And given the number of cards with these taken into account, our time limit for speaking will be two minutes per speaker. And Dan Harrell on the end here, our attorney, will be the timekeeper, and I would ask, so that everyone has an opportunity to speak, that you be very cognizant of the two minutes and respond accordingly when Mr. Harrell says that the time is up. As is our tradition here, we would like to invite our elected officials who would like to speak first. So at this time, I will call Councilwoman Carabello to the microphone. Welcome. Good to have you here with us today.
Thank you, Chairwoman Holly and the board. I just wanted to quickly just say that we thank you for your consideration of this application. The Vice Mayor Shannon Martin and as well as Councilman Carvelly have prepared four more comments, and I'm here just to support the initiative, and we ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here. I wrote some notes up. I'm old-school. It's a pleasure to be here today with the St. Lucie School Board, three of whom served with me during my time from 1994 to 2010. I've followed the charter application for Somerset's Career Academy since its inception. It is consistent with the Economic Development Council Skills Gap Study, the Florida Labor Market Index for Job Training and the needs of local employers, as well as Florida state statutes for approving charter schools. Some important takeaways that I've noticed are that they're proposing a comprehensive program under one roof, and this will be in our business corridor of 1,200 acres and will become an anchor for the many businesses that are contacting us to grow this community. The Career Academy will be in our 1,200-acre business corridor along I-95, four and a half miles. There's a 400,000-square-foot city electric facility going in, and we beat out Dallas and Charlotte for that particular project. We also have Oculus optical manufacturing from Germany, and other projects, as you well know through the Economic Development Council, are being negotiated with the city. All of them are excited about this charter of O Tech Center being in their neighborhood. In our citizen survey, answered by a sample of 5,000 residents, the Career Academy question had the highest positive response for two years in a row. Our residents clearly want this. During my time on the school board, I was involved with many initiatives which some of you shared with me, Ms. Hensley, Ms. Hilsen, Mr. Ingersoll. We worked on bringing the USDA to Fort Pierce for research when we gave up 480 acres of school board property. We helped to lift the federal court order, Ms. Hensley, in 1997 in federal court. We passed a sales tax, 1996 and 2006, together as a team. We fought to bring the FAU Lab School, which had opposition from within the system, and look where that is today. One day, that will undoubtedly be a St. Lucie County school, because I remember negotiating with Mr. Brogan that in 10 years or so, we can convert it to a St. Lucie County school. I suggest that you do call FAU and speak to my classmate, the president there. Thank you, sir.
Good morning. The Port St. Lucie City Council has enjoyed being a supportive partner of St. Lucie Public Schools and has celebrated with you and recognized the successes you as a school board have made possible for the children of our district. Quality education for all residents is a longstanding goal. A career technical school is a longstanding objective and is an important part of our strategic plan in the city. The 2017 St. Lucie County Economic Development Council Skills Gap Study has made apparent that opportunities in the healthcare, manufacturing, and construction trades remains high and jobs go unfulfilled, despite the valued efforts of the school district that you offer today through career technical training in several of our high schools. In Port St. Lucie, citizen input is extremely important to our council. In both 2018 and 19, National Citizen Survey, a scientifically accurate research project used by the Port St. Lucie City Council to engage our residents in helping shaping our policies, advised eight out of 10 residents believed that the city should pursue helping to establish a career technical charter school and provide land on which that school could be built. The council has responded to our citizens and wants to partner with you in this endeavor by providing land in the emerging Southern Grove's corridor, jobs corridor, where the potential for job synergy is obvious. Imagine graduates with technical certifications being able to interface directly with those industries seeking qualified candidates to fill vacancies, and what better place to bring our employers and our employees together? Somerset Academy may have been the only respondent to the city's request for qualifications, the city's vision for a career the city's vision for a career technical school provider. Nonetheless, the citizen panel empowered by the council to render judgment on Somerset's application was not gentle or easy with their queries and challenges on the Somerset submission. Somerset Academy passed the committee's review and earned the city council's endorsement to partner in meeting the workforce challenges of the Treasure Coast.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Next, we would call Jordan Cale. Welcome to the microphone.
Hey, good morning. As a father, a resident of Port St. Lucie, St. Lucie County, a veteran, a former Veterans' Employment Representative who worked closely with the Economic Development Council and the, the Workforce Development Board of the Treasure Coast, I can tell you that we definitely need help in the trades here in St. Lucie County. I think that it would be within our best interest to ensure that our children have a choice and an option to go to a pure vocational technical training academy such as Somerset and given the Somerset track record of success, not only here in St. Lucie County, but throughout our nation, I think it's in our best interest and our children's best interest to approve this measure. I'd also like to say that as treasure hunters, you should all support giving our children the best tools for the hunt. Somerset Career Academy is the best tool and there are no exceptions to giving our children the best tool. Thank you.
Thank you. Eugenie Cale? Welcome you to the microphone.
Hi, my name's Eugenie Cale. I stepped on it. I'm the PTSO President for the elementary school, Somerset Elementary School. We just got done doing a fundraiser to build a playground, so I got the unique opportunity to go all around the city. Every errand that I ran, everything I had to do, I just went and talked to people because I was trying to sell chocolate. In that, I said, I'm from Somerset, I'm doing this, this is what I'm trying to do. And every single person that took the time to talk to me asked me about the vocational school with excitement. Everyone was so excited to hear about what I knew about what was going on with that. And I'm not even at the middle high campus, so I thought y'all should know from like the ground roots, everyone is super excited in the community. I also see the sign here, it says 91.8% graduation rate. That is not 100. It is not. That is 8.2 away. That does not sound significant. 91 sounds great, 8 does not. Imagine if that 8% would be, would have gotten to graduate. Imagine if they had had a different option, a different way, a different perspective on learning from this career technical school. It would change the way you could choose to learn. I'm not learning the way I would like to at a public school. Now I can change my perspective of learning, go to a vocational school, enjoy it, figure out what I like to do and do that the best that I can. Children have different ways to learn. If the school board was able to serve these 8% of kids, imagine what that would happen. I challenge you, oh, this says, this treasure hunter pledge that says every student, you, if you are focused on what's best for every student, the competition for the school board and how these students learn cannot be your first priority. If you are considering the competition that the school board is going to have with a vocational school, you are literally fighting for the same thing.
Thank you.
Welcome to the microphone. Good morning. Thank you for having us. I'm Erica Rains. I'm the Principal of Somerset College Prep in St. Lucie West and of the, hopefully the Somerset Career Academy out in tradition. Before diving in, I want to just, a few points. That 370 some odd schools that have failed, just so that the public is aware, for the record, not one of those was a Somerset school. 69 Somerset schools, zero have closed. So, okay, before I dive in, I want to take a moment to thank your staff for the time that they took to review the application. It's testing season, it's graduation season. I absolutely know that Mr. Tomlinson, Mr. Ferguson, Dr. Wild, Mr. Prince, Mr. Larry and Ms. Thomas are busy and have a lot of demands on their time. So I appreciate the diligence and the time and the professionalism they took to review our application. I would be remiss if I didn't take the opportunity to thank them for that. Speaking of time, it has not been our friend throughout this process. We've received the district's feedback and recommendation with conditions yesterday afternoon. So unfortunately, with less than 18 hours, less than 18 hours to review your feedback and your conditions, Somerset finds itself in a very uncomfortable position. While we absolutely appreciate the staff's recommendation for approval, we would respectfully request that the board approve the application on its obvious merits as described by your staff that reviewed the application and allow those conditions that are stipulated to be negotiated through the contract negotiation process. As you're aware, that contract has to come back to you for final approval anyway. And it's my understanding that our attorneys spoke yesterday and that they agreed that these conditions are just a starting point and that they could be negotiated throughout the, through the process.
Thank you, Ms. Rains. We welcome you to the microphone.
Thank you and thank you for this opportunity. I'm Leslie Hollingsworth. I retired here in, to Port St. Lucie almost three years ago and I want to say that, that in addition to many of my experiences, I had the pleasure of serving on my local school board for two terms or during two terms. And so I appreciate the work that all of you do and appreciate being here. I just want to speak in support of, of this proposal. I feel very good about, about Somerset programs. I've, I've heard them described. I've, I've known people who've been participating, so I'm really supportive of this, of this program. I wanted to say that I remember a point at which we were told as a country that we were moving towards a service direction. And for some reason, and I have to take part responsibility for this, but for some reason, our schools moved away from service, away from vocational and technical programs. And, and so it really took away from the preparation of a number of students who would, would want to, to do that. So I'm glad that we're moving back in this direction. I'm glad to see that Somerset has put this proposal forward and I'm just speaking for their support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. I also wrote some notes, but I'm new school, so I'm using my phone. Hello, my name is Margot Keen. I grew up in this community. I attended St. Lucie County Schools all of my early education and I was raised by two vocational school graduates. My father has worked in construction all of my life and my mother started her career as an x-ray tech, eventually becoming the clinical director of the cath lab in Martin Memorial. I am also vocational school graduate. I'm a Florida licensed midwife. In my six years of attending births, I've delivered over 200 babies, half of whom have been born in this tri-county area. I was the type of student that usually infuriates most teachers. I was a really smart kid, but I was uninterested in the schoolwork. It wasn't until I graduated by the skin of my teeth and started my vocational training that I really started to bloom as a student. And while I struggled to keep a C average in high school, I maintained a 4.0 my entire senior year while taking classes like pharmacology and anatomy. We have a narrative in our culture, you go to college, you get good grades and you get a good paying job. But the harsh reality for many folks in my generation is that the jobs we were promised just don't exist. Over half of the 20 fastest growing careers, as projected by the U.S. Department of Labor, are going to vocational school and certificate program graduates. I did not fit in the traditional model of schooling and I'd like you to think about all the other kids like me because there will always be more kids like me. By offering more opportunities in trade fields in their secondary education, kids can start their careers right out of high school without accumulating mountains of debt like many in my generation have. Blue collar workers are the backbone of this country. Without trade schools, we lose carpenters, mechanics, plumbers and welders, and yes, some midwives. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Welcome to you, Mr. O'Brien.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Holly, Superintendent Ghent and the entire board. About eight years ago, we were here with the same school looking to get started. Been a long eight years and just thought I would talk a little bit about my background in vocational education. Back in the 1950s, I was fortunate to go to a high school up in southern Vermont that had trades, as they called it in those days. And as the recent, the earlier speaker mentioned, a lot of schools have gone away from that for a period of time. I was suitably impressed with the list of the current offerings in vocation. Looks good. But we followed Somerset and know of the operation, the manager and the people there. Unbelievable. We certainly recommend it. My background a little more continuing. First thing I did was oil burner school. Next thing was Pratt &amp; Whitney Aircraft Apprenticeship Program. Three years. Found myself teaching in the Pratt &amp; Whitney Apprenticeship Program. Soon worked part-time for the state of Connecticut in a development program. Many of you might remember some of the older ones. Manpower Development Training Act programs, government funded, but run by the state of Connecticut and their vocational technical school. Few years of that, few years later and some promotions at Pratt &amp; Whitney. Pretty soon, my superintendent came to me and said, Roland, you've got 12 engineers working for you and you don't have a degree. Well, I had an associate's, but did not have the bachelor's. So I went back to school, 40, age 40, got the bachelor's and sounds a little bit like braggadocio, it's not. I got that opportunity strictly because of my vocational background over the years and education, thank you. Education is, is the way to go and vocational education is such an important part. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien.
And please, again, we recommend approving the particular Somerset application.
Thank you. We welcome you to the microphone.
Thank you. It's been years since I've addressed you. Many of you are still school board members. This is a good thing. This school is a good thing. I represent the Opportunity Network. It's 2,200 people in this area that work for a living. It's free admission to the website. If you just Google it, you'll get it, the Opportunity Network at the Treasure Coast and this school is important to them. Let's make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Just for clarification, you gave the business card and Cindy is on here as well. Does she, is she here and wish to speak or?
No, Cindy's not here. Cindy had a, had a heart attack the other day.
Oh, my.
She was three days in the hospital, out and she's working again.
Oh, my.
I had brain surgery four weeks ago, so I'm out of the hospital. This is important to come to. This is an important affair.
Well, I just wanted to be sure with her name on here that we didn't miss her and send our best wishes for a recovery.
Can I make a quick recommendation? Why don't you line the speakers up so you don't have to wait for them to walk up here?
Well, it creates...
And you can go through it really quick. If you want to come to, if you want to come to breakfast on Friday, I hold the largest breakfast in town.
It just creates static is the reason and we didn't want any background music.
No, 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 you're fine. Just line them up, they'll be fine together.
Mr. Ralph Arza? And taking your consideration, Bill Patterson, if you'd like to line up and be ready as soon as Mr. Arza is finished, we will move right into that.
Good morning, board members and superintendent. My name is Ralph Arza. I represent the Florida Charter School Alliance, over 200 schools in the state of Florida, over 200,000 students. And I'm a former legislator and a lot of the laws that were passed, I have a different version of events than Mr. Ghent, you know, and I respectfully, you know, disagree. Some of the information that was put up there, you know, there's some incredible charter schools in Florida that do incredibly well. U.S. News &amp; World Report came out today, some of the Somerset Academies received incredible recognition. I believe that this community has, is a better community and the youth have been impacted in a positive way because of the work that Principal Rains has, has done for this community. Now, charter schools in Florida exist for one reason. They exist because a parent chooses every day to send their child there. They don't have to do that. Just because you approve this doesn't mean that the school will open. It'll only open if parents in this community, they want to support it. All you're doing is allowing them to offer the opportunity to your community. The state of Florida in this past election had, Mr. Ghent brought up politics, let's bring up politics. You had a governor running for office declared against charter schools and you had a governor running for office supportive of charter schools. The winner is Governor DeSantis, who supports charter schools, supports career technical education and this is the law of the land. And I understand sometimes philosophically, we might be against something. When I was in the legislature, I voted for something that I was philosophically against, but I took an oath of office that said I was going to uphold the law of the land. Not the laws that I like, but the laws of the lands. Charter schools are here in Florida to stay. I appreciate Superintendent Ghent's recommendation of approval. I wish that the school would have been notified a little bit earlier of the concerns. Hopefully through the negotiation process, you can work out whatever kinks. I think some of the things that Superintendent Ghent brought up are fair, not unfair. I sincerely hope that you offer your community an opportunity to send children to the school. I think that's all you're doing by doing this today and you're upholding, I think, the will of the Florida voters.
Thank you, Mr. Arza. Mr. Patterson, welcome to the microphone and Cindy Bowling, you are on deck.
Good morning, Chairman and fellow board members. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm here to speak obviously in favor of the, the proposed vocational school for Somerset. I need only look at the record that Principal Rains has had over the past years with, with the success that she has with her school. I'm sure will be ripped down to the, to the vocational school as well. I have four grandchildren in the St. Lucie County School District right now. Two of them are in Somerset and two of them are in the public school systems. Each has their own needs and we are addressing them. I believe that Somerset has gone above and beyond to, to facilitate a, a good quality education to these children and I think it is in part because there's so much involvement required by the families to, to come to the school, to get involved. Maybe that would be something that the public school should possibly examine. Another issue is I, I heard mentioned something regarding the 2.0 GPA average that is, I believe you said was required by, by Somerset. I'm not sure what the GPA is going to be for the vocational school and I'm sure that you guys can hammer that out, but, but I would say that I, I don't think that there's many students in LPA that went in with a GPA of 2.0. So it's, it's, it's kind of like measuring things unequally. Again, I would hope that you would give Principal Rains the opportunity to once again prove herself, it isn't that hard. She has done it before, she'll do it again and we're very proud of her in this community and hope that you'll give her that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bowling, you may, and Lori Badger, you would be ready to speak after. Welcome to the microphone.
Good morning. My name is Cindy Bowling. I am a parent of a, of two Somerset students, one of a special needs kid as well. And I think we all agree, there's not really a debate about the want and need for a vocational school. I think what we're discussing here really is Somerset as a charter and Ms. Rains as a principal. And when Somerset first came, I was an imagined parent and I had my doubts about Ms. Rains. And I made it clear and I ate those words so much that I believe that Somerset can do what it says it can do and I believe Ms. Rains will do what she says she will do. And I hope that you take the recommendation of approving the application and give this community a chance for what it really needs. So, and I thank you guys, I have the opportunity, my daughter's here today, to see this whole process and to learn as we go. And that I believe is also part of what Somerset is, is getting out in the community and learning how it is. So I thank you guys for this opportunity and I hope you approve the application.
Thank you. Ms. Badger and Ryan Weston, I have a note... I have a note that Ryan is going to speak in place of the original. Okay, so Ryan, you're on deck.
Hi, my name is Lori Badger. I've been a resident of Port St. Lucie since 2001. I raised two children in the St. Lucie schools, one of which did the dual enrollment in college and got a bachelor's, is doing really well. The other child did not do so well in school, had a hard time. And he would have benefited from Ms. Rains having this technical school back then. I'm now on my second round of children. I'm raising one of my grandchildren who is in Somerset High School and I have a foster son that is in the elementary school now. One is special needs, the other one is difficult. And we get a lot of help from both schools dealing with any issues that they do have. And as far as the GPA, one of them is having a hard time with their grades. Somerset offers in the high school, free tutoring during the lunch hour that students can go get their lunch and go to the classroom and get tutoring on different days of the weeks for the subjects that they need help in to keep that average up. They also offer it after school if students don't want to use their fun time with the other, their friends and stuff. They do everything they can to help these children succeed. And I think she will do the same thing at the VOTEC school. And just to put it on the record, I graduated from a VOTEC. So it's really needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Weston? And, excuse me if I don't say this last name correctly, but Ellen Penterides? Okay.
Good morning. I will be reading a letter composed by Mary Ann Russell, St. Lucie County State Committee Woman, HOA President of the St. Lucie County Country Club Estates and a resident of St. Lucie County. Dear School Board Members, as a resident of St. Lucie County, I would like the School Board to know that I am very much in favor of the technical school proposed by Somerset Academy. This is exactly what our county needs. Not every student is college material. The trades are an excellent way to make a living. My husband's son-in-law are both elevator mechanics and both earn a very substantial living as such. While it is hard work, the benefits are excellent and the work is plentiful. Our children in St. Lucie County can only benefit from the technical school being proposed by Somerset Academy. This is something our School Board should be promoting and embracing with open arms. Unfortunately, I have seen our School Board fight Somerset Academy from their beginning in St. Lucie County. I cannot understand why you would oppose such an opportunity for our students other than that you are against Somerset for the simple reasons that they do not employ union employees and our School Board is, in my humble opinion, controlled by unions. It is time for our School Board members to do what is best and right for the students in St. Lucie County. Somerset Academy has been extremely successful since their inception. I attended their first graduation ceremony for the high school and was more than impressed with the overall scholarship money awarded to the graduating class of 82 students. You, as elected officials representing the St. Lucie, or the students of St. Lucie County, should have applauded Somerset Academy, but instead fought their expansion of a middle school. It is appalling and upsetting to me that our School Board does not have the best interest of our students at heart, but certainly has the best interest of the unions at heart. You were not elected to represent the unions. You were elected to represent the students of St. Lucie County. It is time for you to get on board and protect our students and not the unions. I implore you to embrace the endeavors of Somerset Academy instead of fighting them. Sincerely, Mary Ann Russell.
Welcome you to the mic. And Amanda Johnson will be next.
Good morning. Thank you for your time and consideration of Somerset Career Academy's application. Not only do I serve as one of Somerset's board attorneys, I'm also a proud founder and parent of two Somerset High Achieving Students in Palm Beach County. As Ms. Rains mentioned, Somerset has a network of 69 successful schools. We have never closed a school and we have been doing this for over 23 years since 1997. Somerset has, does, and will continue to comply with all Florida statutes. Somerset's vision is to empower students to explore global learning opportunities, to promote and enrich their communities and the communities in which we serve. With all due respect, this has very little to do with politics and everything to do with our children and choice. We look forward to continue supporting Port St. Lucie and the city by promoting the equity and equality of all of our children. Thank you so much.
Ms. Johnson and Michael Salerno will be on next speaker.
My name is Amanda Johnson and I'm a resident of St. Lucie County. My family and I recently relocated to this county and upon looking for educational options for our young child, we found that the best option for us was Somerset Academy. And attending this charter school this year, we have received an immense amount of support for our child and his special needs. I have no doubt that Somerset Academy's Career Academy will provide the same atmosphere for children to thrive and flourish that we have experienced as part of the Somerset family. My husband and I are both what you would consider tradespeople, myself in the healthcare field and my husband in the golf maintenance industry. We have both witnessed a great need in our community for tradespeople in our field with a very limited qualified applicant pool. My husband has had a position open for an assistant mechanic for two months now with very few qualified applicants. And we feel that the addition of the Somerset Career Academy will help fill the void in the community and bring qualified applicants to positions within our community. I myself could have benefited greatly from such a school as I did not fit the mold for a traditional education. And I would love for students in the community to have the opportunity to be able to begin a career immediately after graduating high school from this vocational program. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Salerno, welcome to the microphone. And James Crosby will be next.
Good morning, honorable board members. Mr. Gent, my name is Mike Salerno. I'm a retired educator from Broward County. I have almost 50 years in education. I did student teaching in 1972. I've held a lot of positions in Broward because I was also certified in law enforcement. I was the youth gang liaison, I served as a principal, I was a football coach and a curriculum coordinator at the district level. I had a chance to look at the curriculum and I was really impressed. And I'm impressed with this whole agenda here, with this school, with this board. I want to congratulate you on your leadership in getting that referendum passed. We need to pay our teachers better and we need to keep our kids safe. Your motto, I believe, is each, every child, every day, or each child. If we build this vocational center, it's almost like the movie, Build It and They Will Come, it will be a gem. I brag that I'm from Broward County because we were so innovative and anywhere I went throughout the state and I worked in the DOE, Broward was known for their innovation. The Treasure Coast is going to make Broward look silly. Build this academy and they will come. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome to the microphone, Mr. Crosby and Mr. Jim Brand will be next.
Thank you. I'm in support of Somerset Academy, of course. We do need tradesmen, skilled tradesmen to enter the workforce. I'm in construction and there is a great void for qualified employees. I'm not sure exactly what you were referring to, Mr. Gent, about the 2.0 grade point average, but there has to be some kind of vetting and qualification process to get into this school, in my opinion. We need people that actually want to do this and not just somebody who says, well, let's try this out, but actually want to continue on after they graduate. And not just, well, I've got this under my belt and so now I can, you know, do some work on my home. We need people in the workforce and we have to have some kind of vetting process, in my opinion. I actually went to Martin County High School that had a carpenter program. My father was a contractor as well, so that was a benefit for me. But this is a necessity in our area and so I encourage you to approve this.
Thank you. Is, yes. Mr. Brand, welcome to the microphone. And Chad Miller will be our next speaker.
Good morning, Jim Brand from the Porch Factory. I am the immediate past president from the Treasure Coast Builders Association. We're here to give support. Also, we work hand in hand with the skilled trades task force. We work hand in hand with the school boards, with the CTE programs, highly involved in that program at GL where the kids visited the school. So we understand what the School Board does. We try to bolster that program. It's a great program. Myself, I'm a product of a vocational training program up north. I presently have a business here in St. Lucie County. I employ over 30 people. A lot of them are from the schools. We echo the sentiments of the School Board. You know, we want to approve this, we want to make sure they do what they're supposed to do. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Miller, you get the distinction of being the final speaker from the floor.
All right, I will, excuse me, I'll take 10 minutes then.
No, no, no.
I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding. Hi, my name is Chad Miller. I'm a parenting blogger and author of the book, Major Lessons for Minors, which teaches teens real life skills. We all know about the skills gap and the huge support for vocational training from parents. But I've also had the pleasure to speak to hundreds of teens through the Boys and Girls Club, Career Source, and various schools about these issues. And there's also overwhelming support from teens for more vocational and real life training. I've also had the pleasure to work with Ms. Erica Rains and, in the past, through my books, and I've seen firsthand her commitment and her passion to her schools and this community. And I can't think of a better person to lead this endeavor. It's my firm belief that teens should be ready to live and thrive after high school, regardless of their decision to attend college. And I believe vocational training is a must to achieve that. So I hope you guys move forward and approve this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, it is now your opportunity, if you have comments, to share them. Mr. Gent?
I know they got to get this mic on. I just want to make a couple of comments before the board talks, to be very brief. One of our speakers talked about our graduation rate and I want to clarify that and I also want to buy a candy bar afterwards. That the graduation rate that's shown there at 92% is really a cohort of four years. That doesn't mean there's 8% of the kids on the street. In fact, 7.5% of the students are either, don't make it through the cohort but are still enrolled and will graduate. So it's really about 99.5% grad rate. And then we talked about the issue of timing and the school district, this has been a quick process, but after the 90-day review process, the School Board, we did ask for an extension to come to the May 14th regularly scheduled School Board meeting, which would be in the afternoon at 5:00 PM, so there could be greater community input because a lot of our teachers and folks wanted to come and speak. But that had to be agreed upon by both sides and Somerset did not want to extend that. They said they were under constraints with the city and so, time constraints. So that's why we had to come at this time. Not, we would have, you know, we would have preferred to come two weeks later so that everybody would have had more opportunity and more time. And there is no, there is no GPA for Lincoln Park Academy. Thank you.
Board members, any have comments? Ms. Insley? Absolutely.
Are you sure you want me to go first? Okay. And thank you, Mr. Harzer, for not threatening us. This is pleasant. We never go across the line when it comes to the law. So when somebody mentioned that we are bought and paid for or whatever, but that is actually not true. We actually follow the law very, very carefully. We have no concerns about getting close to the line, but we never go across the line. And so things that have happened in the past was because things were not done according to law at the time. And I'm very pleased to see that what we were given checked all the boxes this time. That's not what we were used to seeing. So that's a very good thing and I'm sure that's progress of, you know, learning experiences and going forward. Charter schools are public schools. So anybody who thinks that charter schools are not public schools, they need to read the law themselves. Charter schools are public schools. We have very little control over them, but they use taxpayer dollars. They have certain levels of accountability and most of those levels of accountability will be put in the contract, which is the big deal. This county has been working for years upstream against some of the political wills coming from Tallahassee regarding vocational programming. Years ago, we were told that vocational programming was not needed, that the arts were fluff. And Ralph knows this because he was around and he didn't necessarily agree, but he was around. So things have changed back to where we, where we have been. We never lost the arts in our school. We never lost vocational programming in our school. We didn't have the expansive vocational programming that we wanted because at that time, there was not the need and there were so many constraints. But we all believe in that we need an expansion of vocational programming. I personally had hoped that would be a secondary, post-secondary alliance of a career college or a trade college, but that's not what's in front of us today. Our dropout rate is less than 1/2 of 1% in this county. So we have had the privilege of being able to meet the needs of almost every child. Years ago, this board decided that the graduation rate on time was nice, it's important, but the most important thing was that every child graduated from school with a pathway. And so we have kids who graduate in the summer, we have kids who graduate in December. We do all these things and all of these vocational programs are expanding. This may be a piece, excuse me, that is going to be important to our community, but we need to make sure that whatever happens, indeed it is meeting the mission that is stated, that it is indeed staying focused and that it is not something that actually detracts from the needs of this community but becomes something that's an asset. I would have thought that if we were going to do a trade school, we did not start in sixth grade. However, that is what's in front of us. So I know what the law says, I know we have very little recourse when it comes to this because there's no reason to not accept it at this time. The big deal will be the contract that goes forward with the minutia in that, the accounting measures in there, the curriculum descriptions, all that sort of thing. That's going to be what's, where a lot of the discussion will be held in the next several weeks, actually. So we have done our due diligence and I have been told by somebody that, that they know my job better than I do. I will probably tell you that I think I know my job much better than that person does. So we are going, we will be going forward. You heard the superintendent's recommendation. The recommendation, this is, I find this fascinating. The recommendation was to approve it with discussions when it comes to contract negotiation. So there was nobody that said, that I heard, that they're against us. I have heard a lot from the community, a lot from the community, who have great concerns about this. But that doesn't mean that they understand the law and that the constraints put on school boards. So depending on where you live in the community and what your focus is, there is a level of great concern, which is why it's very important to make sure the contract is appropriate. That level of concern is from people who are not tied to a charter school, but they're very much tied into the big picture of what's going on in our community. Everybody that's talked to me understands the need for true trade education. There's no one that disagrees with that that has contacted me, anyway. The concern they have is how it's delivered and the timing of when it's delivered. So with that said, I think I've probably said enough.
Other board members wish to make a comment?
Yes, I'd like to make a comment.
Dr. Mills?
Chairman Hawley, the most important thing for me is that wherever our children go, they are going to be successful. There are many charter schools, private schools out there where it's a sad situation for our children to be in. The one thing I really appreciate about Somerset is that they have no failing charter schools. That tells me that our children are getting what they need to get and that is the most important thing. I absolutely love the fact that this last election that we had for the referendum was nonpartisan because, and it showed in the results. People voted across the aisle because they care about the education of our children and they know that we need to have the best teachers. and they know that we need to have the best teachers stay within our county to ensure the success of our county. Now, in the past eight years of serving on this board, I have seen a tremendous, incredible progress within the public school system, and we are scoring in high heights because of many of the changes and the hard work that have gone forth, the strategic hard work that has been done. Mainly, our educators have made the difference. I too want to ensure that our children are going to get what this technical school is supposed to give them. As long as they get that, I think it's an incredible idea for this community to be able to offer this. But I do not want our children leaving and going into a place where they will fall behind and will not be able to compete in the future. I think it's an incredible idea to have a focused technical school, but I also am very firm about what this application says is going to do. It does. And I just wanted to make those comments. Thank you, Somerset, that you have not had to close down any schools, and from what I have seen in the past, the years that you've been open, you have done a tremendous job.
Mr. Ingersoll?
Yes, ma'am. First off, I want to thank TCBA, Ms. Maddie, and council members for being here and showing your support. Thank you, community, for coming out and giving us your opinions, and district staff for working on this so well. I'll be in support of this, but I do have concerns and issues along the way. Some of my issues have already met standards, so these are just the opportunity for the community just to hear what I have to say because I don't expect it to change, but just to know where I'm standing. Educational program design partially met standards. And a traditional vocation, if you put all five of us plus the superintendent here, we'll all have a different opinion on what a traditional vocation is. Some people say you go to school one day and get your education, and the next day you work on the trade all day, so you build capacity on that. I'm not, I'm not an expert on vocation. I grew up in a different generation when vocational schools were the hot topic because when Dr. Carveli was principal, he told me how he ran a vocational school and how he changed, you know, some of the things. So when you look at the educational programming design, I had the opportunity to sit all day Friday and click on each individual thing just to see what was going on because I was like, "Man, I got to look at all this today. This is going to take forever." And I started looking at it, and I just saw the program and design, and it does look like what St. Lucie County mirrors in regards to course scheduling, but obviously offers different, different technical skills, which I'm excited to. I was just talking about the scheduling that they had on there, America. Exceptional students, thank you for accepting all students. A lot of our charter schools, we have issues with that, and Somerset has been very, very accommodating to all students in that regards. School climate and discipline, obviously, this school is to meet a direct purpose. This meets standards, and this is where the 2.0 GPA average is. You know, I'm one of those that would like to see it dropped, but obviously it meets the standard. And the reason is, is because it's a targeted school for those quote-unquote 8% students that didn't make it. And we've heard it quite a few times that this is going to meet a need, this is going to meet a need. Sometimes those students can't get there, and once they get involved in a trade that they like, you'll see their GPA going up. So that's my only concern in that one. And when you start talking about different types of school and you say Lincoln Park Academy, Lincoln Park Academy was built for that particular academic drive, too. So when you send your kid to Lincoln Park Academy, you're doing it for a certain purpose. The same thing with sending it to a Somerset vocational school. You're doing it for a particular purpose. I saw about parents, volunteer hours, just realize that some of these parents that are volunteering or may have a required, you have to be flexible because a lot of these people are in the trades and have to work after hours and stuff like that. And I know you will, but I'm just saying, you know, just beware. School climate and discipline, and I don't know how your boards run, but I wish that you had some local representation on your board, a quasi-judicial board. So, I mean, there's tons of people from the community here, tons of people wanting to get involved, but to have a board that's always in Fort Lauderdale or wherever, West Palm Beach, it would be nice for parents, if they have issues or concerns, be able to go to the next level. And we do get, not really from your school, but we do get a lot of concerns from people in the community where their child's are, and they don't have that next level to go to. And you're saying, "Well, I don't need that." Well, you don't need it until it's there, until you have an issue. Managing and staffing, need to be available. And board needs to be available. Transportation, thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. You know, we see a lot, and I see parents are like, "Well, why is he so excited about it?" Because when you have a charter school and it's in a community where only certain kids can go to, which is fine, but the reality is not all the community can attend to it. And that's, and Ms. Raines, know this has been one of my issues, and I appreciate her for this. I know what I wanted to say. I'm not sure where I wrote it down. Ms. Raines is a phenomenal leader. She does an exceptional job. My concern, too, is, and all of you gotten up and basically appreciate her. My concern is, is when a good leader leaves, what will happen to the school afterwards? And this is somewhat to my concerns to the council, council people in Port St. Lucie, is when your leader leaves or changes direction, we find out just in our schools here, sometimes the school has an issue, a tendency to change direction. And when you start building an empire, let's talk about history. Napoleon reached out so far that he was no longer effective. So just be careful on higher-quality people and be aware of how far you can go out to reach your effectiveness. Because when you go so far, you can get burned out and you're not as effective. Just something to think about. The conditions, I think, aren't that bad. Addendum to the charter, the career clusters, making sure that students with disabilities, transportation, and just making sure that everyone has a leadership certificate. You know, just make sure that your leaders are certified. That's basically it.
Thank you, Mr. Ingersoll. Ms. Ingersoll, any comments?
Thank you all for being here today. I know this is important to you. It's important to us as well. I have two daughters that taught in the traditional public school system after teaching in charter schools, so I do have inside knowledge of the differences within the traditional and the charter schools. You learn best when you learn from your children. And I do have concerns. We, charter schools are public schools, and I know there's a lot of confusion with charter schools having different rules because they do have different rules. But we, as school board members, are constitutional officers. This has to come before us. This is our job. This is what we do. This isn't an attack on you or anyone, and there's always this confusion, "Why is the school board doing this?" But this is what we are told to do by the state of Florida. It's a process that they have set up a model. I personally have a concern with charter schools. I'm not saying Somerset, that in this county, and this is very serious to me, I am an educator. I have been a classroom teacher. Out of 43,000 approximate students in public schools, 10% of the staff that teach the children are substitute teachers. Let that sink in, 10%. In our charter schools across the board, which is an average of 4,300 students, 50% are substitute teachers. I say that to you as a concern, as an educator myself. High-level math, science classes should not be taught by substitute teachers. This is a concern. I mean, even with pre-K, when you bring in substitute teachers, this can be a concern. So my hope is that we look at this, that the teachers are degreed and certified, because right now, in many of our charter schools, the teachers are not degreed and they are not certified. And I do have this as factual information that I can share with you if you wish to know that. So that, as an educator, is a concern to me. I'm not saying that this is what's going to happen with Somerset, but just as important, vocational classes, you need to be sure that these are certified teachers that are working with the student's highest level. So this is about a protection for my community and my children. I want all children to have what I wanted for my children, I want the children of this community to have. I think it's an excellent opportunity, and I think it's an excellent idea. I do believe we're going to see duplication of services because of what the school system offers, and now IRSC is opening up. It should be a very large program for the trades. And so there is a concern about IRSC and what they are doing, but I'm sure everyone has looked at that and vetted that information. But, you know, there are some issues. When you see people that push back against charter schools, one of the issues is the schools are not built to a particular code to be used as hurricane shelters. I think that's a big deal, that the schools are built differently from the public school. There's a different set of rules, and a lot of our community do not understand that things are different and we are under a different type of expectation from the state of Florida. So when we ask these questions, it's not to upset people or make people angry, it's for the safety of our community and our children. And again, I welcome you and I thank you for your input today.
For my comments, I would like to just extend a warm debt of gratitude to the staff that has worked diligently and hard, and I appreciate all the Somerset folks that have worked as well, back and forth on this. It is a long, long process, but when we work together on it, I believe great things can come of that. So thanks to our staff. There was a lot of extra, as was mentioned, during testing time and spring break and all kinds of things happening at once. So on behalf of the board, please know how thankful we are for your work and for your willingness to work with our staff as well. And I believe at this time, we are ready to receive the superintendent's recommendation.
Recommend that we approve the Somerset application for the Somerset Career Academy in Port St. Lucie, that it be approved with conditions that are listed in the report.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. We have a recommendation on the floor. Do I have a motion to approve? Thank you, Dr. Mills. Second by Mr. Ingersoll. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, 5-0. And there being no other business to come before us, we are adjourned.